Good afternoon, everybody. This is a special board meeting for the Albemarle County School Board on June 18th, 2020, and I call this meeting to order. First, maybe just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First up, let's do a microphone check. And from the board, Mr. Page?
Graham Page, Samuel Mello District.
Ms. Carlson?
Trina Carlson, Rye District.
Dr. Acuff?
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Ms. Lee?
Judy Lee, Rive Anna District.
Ms. Osborne?
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
And Mr. Oberg?
Magisterial District.
And my name is Jono Alcarro. I'm the at-large member of the Albemarle County School Board. I will state for the record, and the minutes of this meeting should so reflect, that the meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State Law and Albemarle County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being streamed live on the Albemarle County Public Schools website, and public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. And also, I'd like to say for anybody listening in who is looking at an older agenda, item 2.2 has been moved to the second meeting, which would be a week from tomorrow, of the school board retreat. Ms. Schmidt is going to be meeting with some of the people involved in that particular issue and would like to incorporate that into the presentation to the board. And I just want to read one statement that I think is highly important. Tomorrow, June 19th, is the oldest national celebration of the ending of slavery in the United States. On that day in 1865, a general order was read to the people of the last slaveholding state in the Union in Texas, which said in part, "All slaves are now free." The order proclaimed that this action involved the absolute equality of rights between former slaves and their owners. History has sadly not agreed. Over the past 155 years, slavery's disgraceful legacy separated those rights, consistently destroying lives and families and causing incalculable damage to our nation. It is still doing those awful things today. Public schools were not established for such purposes. They were established to be the place where all children would receive equal opportunities to be safe and cared for and to learn and develop at their highest potential. We are not yet such a place. Earlier this week, Governor Northam said slavery is not just the history of our black communities, this is everyone's shared history. Our anti-racism policy promises, quote, "We are committed to establishing and sustaining an equitable community that achieves the school division's equity mission to end the predictive value of race and ensure the success of each individual student and staff member." To appropriately embrace this unity of purpose, it is imperative that our school division join the state and our country, and our county, rather, in designating June 19, Juneteenth, as a time of personal reflection and renewed commitment to racial justice and equality for all. A day that stands in tall fulfillment of the four values of our school division, to serve all of our students all of the time, to partner with members of our community, to respect all, and to achieve excellence in our relationships with all. It is appropriate to celebrate that which is the true place of public education in our communities and in our nation. And so I call upon my colleagues on the board to approve effective immediately that every June 19th will be a day of honor, a day of personal reflection and renewed commitment to equal opportunity and justice for all, and be set aside as a paid holiday for all school division employees. May I have a motion, if someone is comfortable, to approve this?
I move that we approve the statement placing, the Juneteenth statement, placing our county in line with county and state guidelines as outlined by Governor Northam. It's a powerful statement, so I approve, move that we approve the statement.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's see, Christine?
Yes.
Would you do a roll call for us, please?
Certainly. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chairman Alcarro?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. The motion, the motion passes, and starting tomorrow, it will be a paid holiday for our employees. Okay, first up is the approval of the agenda. Oh, yeah, before I do that, actually, I know I wrote this to members of the board, but I just want to remind us that Allison Lenny is listening in tomorrow. She's going to be facilitating our retreat sessions tomorrow and next Friday, and she wants to listen in as she always does to, in order to better facilitate it and have topics that are germane to all of us individually and as a group to make the meetings more worthwhile. Thank you, Alice, Allison. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chairman Alcarro?
Yes, the motion passes. Our first topic of the day is the COVID-19 update on school operations. Dr. Huzz, do you want to kick this off, or how would we do this?
I am very proud of the work of our Return to School Task Force, and so as to not lengthen the agenda, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Collins to frame up a presentation. Thank you very much, Debbie.
Thank you, Matt, but I think Roslyn is going to start the COVID update.
Good afternoon, Roz. My name is Roslyn Schmidt, I'm the Chief Operating Officer. I believe this is our third or fourth COVID update meeting. In the past, we've done a round robin of updates from various staff members, but this afternoon, we just have three brief topics that we will spend the, excuse me, we just have three brief topics to touch upon, but we'll spend the bulk of the agenda on the work of the Return to School Task Force. First, I just have a brief update on our student meal service. Our student meal service is continuing to operate. As we transitioned into the summer, sorry, I want to make sure I'm on the right side there. Most notably, as we transitioned into the summer, we did make some slight location and time changes. Most notably, at smaller shops, we were able to consolidate and reduce to only three days a week. This was more efficient on our side, but hopefully more convenient for families as well. Students received two days' worth of meals at a time, so they are still receiving the same amount of food. We have publicly communicated that we are operating through June 30th, but we are finalizing details to continue throughout the summer, and we'll communicate times and locations once they are set. Just this week, we've learned that the DOE and the USDA have continued all previous waivers, which is great news and will allow us to serve all schools throughout the summer. I will now hand it over to Dr. Kaiser, who will review how we are bringing staff back to our buildings.
Good afternoon, board. This is Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. I'm very pleased to share with you that we have begun to return the work, we have begun the return to work process for our 11- and 12-month staff members. We are doing this through a phased approach to allow our employees to return to work in a safe manner as we prepare for the opening of school. Through each of these phases, we continue to follow the guidelines of the CDC, the Virginia Department of Health, as well as advisement from Governor Northam and our State Superintendent. Summer Phase 1 began this past Monday. During this phase, our employees may continue to telecommute as their work allows. For employees whose work does not allow for them to telecommute, we have welcomed them back physically to their workspace. Most of the employees who have reported back to work at their physical sites are in the support services. The leadership of each of our support departments has developed protocols for their employees to return to work. These include, but are not limited to, the adjustment of schedules and workspaces to allow for physical distancing, use of masks when physical distancing is not allowable, and daily employee health self-screenings. They also have done orientations to ensure that employees are aware of the expectations and changes to the protocols that, from what they typically have done in their workspace. With the start of Summer Phase 1, the need for essential pay is eliminated per our building closure policy. We will begin Summer Phase 2 on July 6th. The goal of this phase is to transition all of our 12-month employees back to their work sites. While this will begin July 6th, the transition will be completed with all 12-month employees physically back at work, 15 days, 15 workdays, that is, prior to the teachers returning. Beginning July 6th, phones will again be answered at the school or department rather than using a centralized phone line as we have done through the closure. Our buildings will be open for visitors by appointment, and with direction from the governor and state superintendent, there will be limited onsite student experiences for both learning and athletics. Principals and department leaders are working on protocols to safely bring their employees back to the works, back to work in this phase. The third phase will be encompassed in the Return to School Plan that we will be sharing later in this meeting. We recognize that there is considerable, that there is considerable concern by our employees regarding the safe return to work, though our current leave option, through our current leave options and the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, which allows for emergency sick leave and emergency family medical leave for qualified employees, we will work with our employees who feel that they are not able to return to work. We recognize that this is a delicate balance between the needs of the employees and the ability for us to return to the normal operations of the school division. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Collins.
We can go to the next slide.
It advanced on my screen. Are you not seeing summer learning?
I am seeing summer learning, thank you. I wanted to bring you up to date on our summer learning options. We have options for our elementary, middle, and high school students. The option, the summer's learning begins in July, July 6th to the 31st. In elementary schools, we're doing something a little different based on our continuity of learning. We are going to post and offer enrichment opportunities for all. So each week during July, we have teachers that will be posting to the division website, enrichment opportunities that are gauged to K-2, 3, 3.5, and 6.8. So those opportunities are ones that any student can get involved in and can work through and work on. With our elementary schools, we're going to do a check and connect, which would be a signup. So if a parent would like for a teacher to reach out to their student and work with them on the enrichment opportunities, then that would be something that the parent and child can sign up to do through the elementary school. And then we will continuing offering our tutoring option for identified students, which is typically what we offer during the summer school. So that would be the three phases or the three tiers that would be offered in elementary school. Similarly, in middle school, we'll offer an enrichment opportunity for all, a check and connect component where, with students who did not engage or complete their continuity of learning in the spring, and then we will continue offering our tutoring options to identified students. Summer, high school is exactly as offered with the summer school courses that students sign up for and participate in. We also will offer a check and connect for students who did not engage or complete the spring courses. As I said, these are July options. Some of the high schools and middle schools are continuing in June with, or beginning in June to do the check and connect, so not to lose any momentum with the spring learning.
So we are just going to pause there. That's the only, the brief updates that we had. If there's any questions on what's going on currently before we talk about plans for next year?
I had a question. What constitutes a qualified employee under the Family Medical Leave Act? I ask that because I had a teacher call and say that they wouldn't be able to teach because the district that they live in, their child will be at home, and he needs to be homeschooled by him. And does that constitute getting to access those 12 weeks of leave, or no?
Yes, under the, under the FSFCRA, there's allowable emergency FMLA for people who need, who need to be home because of childcare issues because of a school closure. So if, I'm assuming that we would interpret that as if a school is not meeting every day on the days that they were not meeting, it is a school closure for them.
And are we, how are we conveying that to them so they know? Because I know not every employee knows their rights under the FMLA.
We will, we will be, sorry, I'm getting tongue tied here. We will be communicating out the leave options and the opportunities and things for them to be thinking about as we get closer through to the start of the school year. At this point, what I would do is encourage people to reach out to Human Resources if they have questions about leave.
Hey, I want to, go ahead.
The last follow-up is, are we anticipating, based on that, and in knowing that Charlottesville is looking at a different track and the surrounding divisions, are we worried about teacher shortages?
I think that, I think that once we, you know, we've got our contracts, it just went out last week. As of right now, I had a meeting with the HR team a little while ago. About half of our teachers at this point have returned their contracts. They're due at the end of next week, and I think at that point, that will give us a little bit better indication. We will also be working with our, with our principals to reach out to their staffs to help us ascertain what those needs are. We do, we do anticipate a handful of people that aren't going to be able to come back to work, but I'm, we're hopeful that it's not a large number.
I do just want to add that I had a request from the Albemarle Education Association to present professional development on employees' legal rights during this time. And so they, they will be presenting their program in addition to our professional development offerings that we'll be having this summer, so that employees that want to tune into that to learn more about their individual rights, they will do that. And Ross Holden is coordinating with them.
Okay, I have a question. I think it's already been made clear, but we are using check and connect to connect with anybody who had problems with internet service, right?
We're using check and connect with any student who did not complete the, their spring, their, their school courses. Some of our children that had, that did not have access did complete because we provided other opportunities and other ways for them to complete. So check and connect is helping finish up students through their spring obligations and assignments.
I have a question for staffers returning. What is the expectation about mask wearing?
So right now, as with, for the people that are coming into Phase 1 and Phase 2, they are to be wearing masks in their areas if they are not able to physically distance, the six-foot minimum distance from people. So, for example, passing in the hallways and in elevators and in workspaces where there are multiple people in a close proximity, they will be wearing masks. But for example, like when I step back and I'm in my office and I'm in there by myself, I may, I wouldn't have to wear it in my office unless I had somebody in there with me.
Any other questions? Okay.
How robust are the summer high school course offerings? They're the same offerings that we do every summer. So they're, they're intended to be the full course with the, with the standards that we would expect for any child.
So I would say, I have to, I have to add a little anecdote that, um, last week, I was, I went to the post office to mail a package, and it was at the end of the workday, and Robbie Munsey was there. He's our summer school principal, and he actually had three packages that he was mailing to students that were enrolling in summer school. I forget what they were for, to be honest with you, but I just have to say. So he was, I have to say, first of all, I'm really proud of Robbie. That's, that's customer service right there for him to be out there doing that. The other thing he told me was that our summer school enrollment is very high this summer. It's much higher than it has been in the past. I asked him how much higher. He didn't have the numbers on hand, but he said it was easily. Did someone say something?
It's 612 students.
Okay, great. And so what, what is, typically, it's in the neighborhood of about 400, I think. So, um, he was pretty excited about that because he feels like students are taking advantage of the online opportunity.
I have a question that's sort of relevant, and if it's not, if it's not, rule me out of order, Jono. I'm just curious, does the school board anticipate, going back to in-life meetings, have we thought about that? To date, that has not been a live conversation. If you, if you feel we should raise that, let's do it possibly during the meeting tomorrow, or at the, or at the end today. I mean, that's fine. Okay. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Did you want to move forward?
Yes, please. Chris, can we bring up the slideshow for the Return to School Task Force?
Yeah, I can do that. I apologize, I thought you all were doing your own slideshows. So I don't have that ready, so I'll have.
I can, if you, if I can share my screen.
Yes, everyone can share their screen.
All right, so I can actually do that?
Okay.
All right, can you see the screen now?
Yes, we could, but now we can't.
Okay, let me try again.
Okay, there we go.
All right, do you see the slide?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Debbie Conn's Deputy Superintendent, and I'm here this afternoon to share the work of the Return to School Task Force. We will give you an overview of the contents of the document, share next step, steps with you, and take any burning questions about organization of the document or any key points. Tomorrow during your retreat, you will be able to, we will be available for more discussion or in-depth questions about content.
Hey, Debbie, you, you need to run the slide. Right now, we're getting the, well, now we got nothing, but we were getting the, the unrun slide, if that makes sense.
Oh, you, I need to present.
Yeah.
There?
Perfect.
That's it.
Nope.
Don't do anything, you got it.
Okay, I'm not touching a thing.
Got it.
One of the things we want to do, this is the Return to School Planning Guide that the superintendent asked us to put together in, in April. And this guide, this guide provides a framework for the, to guide the division's ongoing work. This is a comprehensive planning guide, and we're referring to this as our rules of the game, not necessarily the playbook. We want to make sure that we're aligned with the guidance that we're getting from the state and local public health officials as well as the Department of Education. At this point in time, I want to make sure that I recognize the folks on the task force. We had 12 members on the Task Force Steering Committee, Roslyn Smick, Smith, Rick Verhoeback, Claire Kaiser, Craig Dommer, Jay Thomas, Aspie Johnson, Michelle Castner, Gudette Crummy, Kevin Kirsch, Jamie Forman, and Jennifer Butler. We organized around focus areas, healthy environment, healthy student, healthy staff, and healthy learning. From our first meeting, the task force bloomed to include 80-plus members representing all ACPS departments and functions. As you can see from this slide, it is organized with an introduction with, that sets purpose by focus areas and includes a glossary of terms. This afternoon, each of the focus group facilitators will share highlights from their group work. It's, it's, my screen sharing is having trouble, sorry.
You want me to share while you talk?
Maybe easier.
Yep, one second.
It keeps going back and forth.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. I am Rick Verhoeback, Principal of Monticello High School. I had the pleasure of working, working with Roslyn Schmidt on healthy environments. Our team consisted of 16 fellow administrators, athletic directors, nurses, and teachers. We reviewed information shared by Governor Northam, the Virginia Department of Education, and the Center for Disease Control. There were many topics that we discussed early on, but we defined our purpose to develop practices and protocols that were necessary in reopening schools in a safe manner for all of our stakeholders. We narrowed our focus to four areas, cleaning, building and grounds, transportation, and our response to confirmed cases of COVID-19. So cleaning and disinfecting of learning spaces and materials before, during, and after all uses. We will follow the guidelines from the Center for Disease Control and health organizations to operate our buildings to reduce the exposure of COVID-19. We will maximize the spaces that we have in our building, utilizing our buildings to minimize contact and the sharing of equipment. Transportation, which is one of the highest priorities for us returning to school. Establishing protocols for cleaning our buses before and after use. Using personal protection equipment for students and staff. Maintaining social distancing. Designing routes to meet the needs of all of our students and families. And communication on the use of transportation, the expectations, and our schedules. Finally, making sure that we have protocols that will be in place in response to confirmed cases of COVID-19 in our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verhoeback. Our next group is healthy staff. Mr. Dommer and Dr. Kaiser chaired that group, and I think Mr. Dommer will lead us through these next slides.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, and good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Craig Dommer, and I'm the principal at Hollymeade Elementary School. Dr. Kaiser and I were also privileged to work with 14 talented educators on the healthy staff section of the document. As we began work, we were often guided by the essential question of what will it take to have employees feel as safe and confident as possible in returning to work? Much brainstorming, we landed on a statement of purpose that you see before you, in three key areas of physical safety, mental health, and attendance and leave. Professional development was an area that ran throughout the entire document, and the steering committee decided to consolidate it under healthy staff, giving us our four key areas. Each work group worked to come up with guidelines for strategies in those areas that encompass the scope of action that will be necessary to achieve our purpose. Physical safety, while having some overlap with healthy environments. Our group focused on creating guidelines for creating staff health screening upon entrance, physical distancing measures, consideration for PPE for different staff members based on contact with others, and how staff should interact with visitors in the building. Mental health was a key component and concern for our group as we acknowledged the added stress that teaching and working in the pandemic will have. The work group worked with human resources on both the schools and the local government side to focus on making sure that we were promoting programs currently in place, adding additional support for administrators and supervisors to be able to guide staff to those resources and creating a peer-to-peer program for providing support. As I said previously, professional development was the theme throughout, and we'll need to take steps to make sure that all employees are knowledgeable and have the skills to manage both the changes in practice for health and safety, as well as making sure that we're prepared to meet the instructional needs of our students in different environments. Attendance and leave is a technical area for our group, as we need to respond to employees with a varied set of circumstances. The work group was able to create guidelines that we feel are based both around the types of leave available and mandated by federal regulations and an overall sense that as an organization, we will work with employees to accommodate their situations for their safety while meeting the needs of our students. There's obviously a lot of work still to be done, but we feel that our work group has captured the scope and guidelines necessary to create and implement practices that will ensure a healthy, safe, and productive return to work for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dummer. Healthy Students was co-chaired by Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Thomas. I think Ms. Johnson will bring us information in this focus area.
Yes, good afternoon, school board and community members. My name is Ashby Johnson and I'm the Principal at Jack Jewett Middle School. I worked with our Director of Secondary Education, Jay Thomas, and a team of about 20 other educators on the Healthy Students group. Our group focused on four main areas in order to prioritize the physical and mental health of all of our students. Those four areas were physical health and safety, mental health and wellbeing, scheduling options, and athletics, field trips, and extracurriculars. We had four main guiding questions that drove our committee work. I will highlight some key areas from each question for you all today. Under physical health and safety, we will both coordinate and partner with families to educate them on the symptoms of COVID-19 and the procedures for what to do if they think their child is ill or has become exposed to the virus. We will survey families to determine the current health of students and needs of the family before we reopen. We will work to develop safety protocols that align to the public health guidelines. Schools will repurpose non-traditional learning spaces such as cafeterias and gyms to comply with social distancing guidelines. We will also minimize the amount of movement in between classes at especially the elementary school level. In order to identify and support the mental health and wellbeing of all of our students, we will collaborate with our school counselors and community service providers to develop protocols and procedures to support our students. Again, this will include a survey of families to determine needs. We will develop and strengthen our current programs such as check and connect, freshman seminar, responsive classroom, and developmental designs. We will establish a community outreach team to partner with Region 10, DSS, and other community agencies. Next, we focus on scheduling options that would support multiple learning environments. This was an extremely challenging area to think through. We determined that scheduling should be equitable and flexible and might vary based on elementary and secondary levels and even specific buildings in order to meet the needs of all students. And although you won't see specific plans outlined, we felt strongly that we needed to prioritize in-person learning for our youngest students, English, English language learners, and students with disabilities. In order to do this, we will have to communicate and coordinate with transportation services to ensure that we can meet the transportation needs of any potential plan that we put in place. Lastly, we address extracurriculars, athletics, and field trips. All of our decisions about reopening athletics and activities will be aligned with the guidelines and recommendations provided by the Virginia High School League, Board of Education, and public health officials. We will continue our collaboration with ACAC Fitness and Wellness Centers to ensure that our athletic trainers are following the Return to Sport guidance. In closing, I just want to thank our group for their thoughtfulness and hard work, and I'd also like to thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you all for the key points that you shared in all your work in your small groups. I estimate that each group spent more than 20-plus hours over three or four weeks researching and compiling this work. And before I forget, I want to make, acknowledge the amazing work of Jennifer Butler. She compiled the work from the four work groups and put it together in a way that makes sense and is accessible. And I know if you've had a chance to look at the document, you can see her, how her hard work paid off. Our last slide for the task force gives our next steps.
What about healthy learning?
Maybe we have one more section.
Sorry, my goodness, I, I forgot the healthy learning. Our next group is healthy learning, Ms. Crummy and Ms. Castner, a co-chair of that group. Ms. Crummy, I think you're going to bring us the information from that group.
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Gwadet Crummy, Principal of Croze Elementary. I work with Michelle Castner, Director of Elementary Schools. Our Healthy Learning Committee had 25 members from K through 12 educators who represented diverse perspectives across the division. Our first task was to reflect and brainstorm together what worked for our students during the COVID-19 and what did not work. One of the key things we heard was how critical it was for teachers to stay connected with their students to help them navigate learning through this new environment. Those learning partnerships were essential in offering social emotional support and offering choice in how students could demonstrate their learning. We developed five focus areas that you see before you that included design principles and practices to serve as guidelines to ensure our support of student learning. Our commitment is that our shared philosophical tenets of high-quality teaching and learning will be present in any environment, which leads to our healthy learning guiding questions to address those five focus areas. Lastly, using the division's framework for quality learning as our guide, we were prioritized equitable access, relationships, student choice, and active learning in the instructional design. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crummy. And finally, our next steps. As you can see, we have several next steps as we, as we move to our return to school. This document, we will continue to work on through early next week. We have sent the, from the, the document out to our advisory groups and are getting feedback from them, and we will receive feedback from you tomorrow. And then so we will publish the guide as our, again, as our rules of the game as we begin to develop our playbook. You will decide on a date for starting the school, and then from the 22nd to the July 3rd, we will begin to survey parents about regarding in-person, virtual, and transportation needs. These are things that we know that we're going to have to consider as we move forward to return to school. By July 9th, we will determine schedule and publish it, and by July 15th, we will write and submit a comprehensive instructional and health plan to the Department of Education. This is one of the criteria and one of the requirements in the governor's return to school plan. So I want to pause here and see if there's any questions about process or organization around the Return to School Planning Guide.
Any questions?
And I know you got this guide yesterday, so you may not have had a chance to dig deep into it. And that's why we're going to be available tomorrow at the retreat to, and to answer any kind of content-specific questions.
And I think we're going to be starting off tomorrow's retreat with this, with this subject. I mean, one comment that I would make and is, I've been through this now twice, and this is, this is an extraordinary document. We heard from four principals with fairly short presentations and all of which were to the point. And yet, if you look at, through the document, there are four, five, six, seven pages of steps of specifics in terms of what they are intending to do in order to get the schools up, up operating, and this includes so many moving pieces. I mean, I, I have to admit, I'm looking forward to, to seeing the calendar presentation in a few minutes. But this is a tall order for 60 days from tomorrow. And so there's, there's, there's a lot to this, and especially if we're going to do it right. And I know that everybody in the cabinet and all the teachers and all the principals and all the others who are on staff throughout the system want to do it right for our kids, and all the parents do too.
One of the things I heard from each group is they were reporting back and thinking through this, and as I listened into their conversations is the amount of depth and research they went into, how many different places they looked to and thought about, and did their due diligence around. And I think you'll see that in the bibliography and some of the resources that's been provided in this document. But it's, it's a very intricate and complex problem to try to wrap your head around. And I think these 80 educators and staff really did an amazing job in such a short time to give us a planning guide that will, will give us a way to think about school starting and the way, a way for us to move forward. I think that it also, it gives us direction that we will use whether we're in a, when a time of pandemic virus or, or not. There's, there's great direction around some of the, the things that we need to consider as we move forward.
You know, I'd also like to say that I, I think the whole board is aware of the fact that we've gotten some pretty interesting emails on this subject, and that there have been a myriad of suggestions, you know, on all, on all fronts, including one that said, maybe we should call this just a, a pause year and have everybody repeat next year. So that's one extreme, and then there are others, you know, wanting to just get up, get going, and just power through. And there's so much thought that's put in on this, and I look forward to our conversation tomorrow morning.
Well, the last thing that we wanted to say before we transition to the next item is about schedule. Rosalind, if you can put that slide back up. One of the things we know that is the burning question with our, with our parents and with our students and with our teachers is, so how will you begin the fall? And based on the information we've had from the governor's planning documents and from our, this planning document from the CDC, from our, our regional health department, we are looking towards starting the school year in a hybrid learning model. And by that, we mean that one portion of the student body will attend classes on the campus for a period of time while another portion of may learn remotely. Two groups may alter days or weeks on campus to build a blended learning environment, and elementary students' schedule may be different than middle school and high school. And I think that's one of the things you heard in the recommendation from our, our task force, but also from the governor's task force that elementary students, especially our younger students need, perhaps need to be on buildings more often, as well as special needs, our EL, L learners and other groups of students. Students without access may have different kinds of opportunities to be in buildings as other, but we wanted to go ahead and let everyone know at this point in time, based on the guidance that we're seeing, that this is how school will begin. Moving towards getting, having our students in the buildings as often as we can, we know that's critical. But we also know that we have challenging logistics to try to do that in a safe way. We also will be offering parents a virtual learning option so that you may continue to stay at home, learn virtually, but stay in a, in a parallel way with what's happening in, in the, in the regular classroom. So we're, we wanted to go ahead and put that out there. This is not the recommendation of the task force, but in guidance with the task force, we feel like that this is important information to go ahead and let our parents, staff, and students know.
So Debbie, if for the, for the middle school, high school kids who are doing a day off or a week off, we're going to have kids with, with different first days of school, yeah?
We're, we anticipate that we would look at different schedules for different groups of students, yes. The challenges we have, as you know, is a very large county with lots of transportation needs. So one of the things, if you go back to our timeline, we need to determine from our parents what their interests are. If we have parents that do not require, do not require transportation, they, they say, I'm not, I do not want my child to ride the bus, then that allows us to do different options than if we're transporting the same number of children we transported right this year with school, when, in March. So we, there's still a lot of input to making decisions about how, how often we can have how many children in school buildings.
Debbie, with, I see in the Healthy Students section that no decision has been made on masks and such. Just wondering, in terms of the timeline, do we have any concerns about the availability of any kind of mask or other kinds of disinfectant types of materials that we may need to open?
I think Ms. Schmidt can answer a little better than I can on that one. I know that they're doing research around those, and we've put out queries and questions around those, those, that, those topics. Rosalind, would you add anything?
I can't get my video. No, I, I would agree with that. We are in the process of researching and procuring all necessary PPE and disinfectant materials. While we do want to anticipate some supply issues, our issues, just based on lessons learned the last couple of months, our intent is to award multiple bids so that we have some redundancy of effort. So no red flags yet, but we will keep you posted.
We, we had, we got an email on, on the board, I don't know if it got copied to the cabinet, but from a mother who said that there is no way, under any circumstances, she can allow her child to wear masks. And I, I don't know how widespread that would be, but what do we do if the school system says, hey, you gotta wear a mask? And we have parents who simply refuse to allow that to happen?
Then I think that's part of the virtual op, option that, that would be there. We also can offer homeschooling to parents. I mean, we have several options that we help parents navigate. So we could be a blended learning, you're going to come to school some and be virtual some. You're, you're going to choose a virtual option and move along with the class, or you can be homeschooled, and that allows a parent to go to purchase, provide, to think about their own sources of curriculum. We're still working through a lot of this.
I, I, I just want to, I just want to say that I think we need to be prepared for that issue, that, you know, if we have parents coming to the, into the school building, if we're saying, hey, look, you need to wear a mask. And I'm not saying that we should say that, but if we're saying that, I think we need to be prepared for people to refuse to do that, because I've been, I, I went to Lowe's the other day that says you have to wear a mask in order to go to Lowe's, and half the people were wearing them. And so I think for some people, it's going to be a point of pride that they're not going to wear the masks, even if they're told they have to. So I think we should just go in with the understanding that that's something our principals may have to deal with.
We've talked with the Health Department, and one of the things that we know is it was some of this, there's a lot of education that we're going to have to think about doing with parents. And so we've talked about what that would look like, how we would offer that, the commitment to the community. And, and one of the things we know is if we all stay healthy, then we are more likely to be able to be in school, in school buildings. So I think that's part of the conversation we have to have with our parents is that this is around us being able to be in school buildings together. And that we, we, there are health risk to be in school. So we have to figure out how we can mitigate that to our, to our best knowledge, if you will, and, and think through those kinds of options.
Ms. Lee, did you have a question?
Yeah, I actually had two. Oops. The first one was in reference to something Ms. Crummy brought up about the survey. And I was just, I missed many meetings, so I apologize if this was in one of them that I missed. But have the results of that, our response to COVID been made public or been made, you know, to us? And then the second question I have is as part of the process on July 9th, it says the student, determine the student, I can't remember, schedule now. And what exactly does, will that entail? I'm just, you know, obviously other school divisions have been able to put together more, you know, their plans by now. And I appreciate this framework. I think it's a good, as you say, it's not quite the playbook. And I'm just curious when we will be able to, you know, roll that out to folks.
We're, we're, that, that, the July 9th was a deadline for us. We'd like to be able to do that earlier, but one of the things that we need is some more data. We're going to need more data from our parents around transportation. If they're in, if they are going to transport their children and if they're going to come to school. Because all that information allows us to determine how many students we can transport at a time and how many parents. We also have been working with the health department about the recommendation around transportation. If you read some of the guidelines, it looks like it might be every other seat. So for our biggest buses, that's 12 students. And for other conversations, it might be every seat, there's one student. So we're trying to get some more definitive information around that because that changes the number of students that we can get into the building every day. And we're, we're determined and really pushing ourselves to get as many children in, in the buildings as we can. So that's part of it. We're, we're, I think we could say that here's the schedule. We're going to have elementary children come in every other day, secondary children come in every other day. And we could move with that, but we don't feel like that's necessarily the right thing to do. So we're determined to get more data and push ourselves to have more options for students and parents.
And what about the survey?
We do have the survey. I think one of the things we, we looked at a leadership, at the leadership team with that yesterday. So we do have some information around some things that we, we're going to plan for differently than when we closed in, in March. So we have that information. Patrick, Patrick, what is the plan to give that information to the public and to the board?
So thanks, Ms. Collins. We are, so I can send that to the board immediately as soon as I finish the calendar presentation in just a moment. I will, I'll get that up to you. And then our communications team is working on getting that posted on our survey results page. So it should be out very soon.
The other thing that I had asked for, when, when it's all finished, when the return to school plan is finished, is that the results from that survey should be an addendum to, or it should be part of the appendix of the reports because I want to help connect the dots that a lot of the planning that was done was based on feedback that we were receiving from our response initially.
Ms. Collins, one question about the virtual option for students to stay at home. Will there be any, any interactivity with, with, with that learning? Or would this be pretty much doing it on their own?
The discussion we've had at this point, and I'm just going to, I'm going to preface all this with these, these are preliminary discussions. And I don't want anybody to walk away saying this is exactly what we want to do. But we've had discussions about synchronous, synchronistic learning. So that means students together at a certain time doing, say, math. So we're all going to come in at nine o'clock. It's our first period and we're going to do math for so long together in Zoom or in Schoology. And then if a child was taking that course, they could parallel the work in that virtual learning environment, but they're not necessarily ever coming into the building. So you have a group of students that would come into the building ever so often, however that schedule works out. But you might have a parallel group that stays virtual, but they could come into those, those classes, if you will, listen to the teacher, work on that, but they would stay in a virtual environment. So that's the way that we're starting to begin to think about that.
Other questions?
Are there some classes that we really can't do either way? I'm thinking of things along drama or some of the music classes. Are they possible?
They are possible, especially with students being able to come in the building some of the time. One of the things we, we learned from our fine arts teachers and our visual and fine arts teachers is they were able to figure out how to do some of the work virtually. So I think that's part of the challenge of what will be for teachers is what do I need to have students in the building for and, or hands-on for, or what, what resources do I need to hand them as they're going home? That makes the, the work in our course, the standards that we set for the course accessible and attainable for students. So I think that's part of the, the conversation, the ongoing teacher development that will take place. But you're right, some of them are easier than others.
My daughter took drama and I got to tell you, some of the stuff they did virtually was really cool. I was really impressed by some of the stuff they got to do.
That's good to hear.
Our, our teachers are amazingly creative. I've heard some great stories from students and families about the creativity of the teachers and how they figured out. Some, some of the students have had some of the best experiences they've ever had during this time. And many students really adjusted well to a different format for school. It was almost like a break that they needed. So one of the challenges that we, we talk about at our level is as we make these kinds of plans, we have to, we have to leave enough room for the creativity of our teachers, our families and our students to, to be part of the idea generating process and, and the iteration of what a class is going to look like, because that's where engagement comes from. So planning this out with, with enough detail to make sure everyone is safe and that is going to be, everyone will be treated fairly and have the best access that they can is, is our job. And then allowing that level of creativity to come in from the, the school level principals, the teachers and the families and students, that's where you get the engagement.
Just one more question for me. How have we been doing with our English language learners? And do we have anything additional planned for the fall?
One of the things this, this kind of work allows us to do, if we have secondary students and not all the students are in the building at the same time, there could be groups of students that could come in every day. So English language learners could come in every day based on the kinds of scheduling we're looking at. They, they have been identified as high-risk learners and that would, they, they were in the, in all the task force documents from DOE, our task force, they are, they are identified as a priority. So we would try to get them into school buildings as much as possible for as many days during the week as we could. So those become priorities for us. And as we start thinking about how we schedule, we look to those kinds of, those kinds of principles, if you will, to help us decide.
I had one more question about, oh, sorry, Katrina. Actually, it was based off something that you said earlier about teaching shortages. Are, when you're looking at leave for teachers, is there a guideline of how long you think they would need? I mean, and I say that as someone who's been sick for 78 days. So I, I just am curious because I looked through the leave policy and, you know, I was just trying to figure out if teachers would have enough time and then if they would have coverage if they got sick.
Dr. Kaiser?
Thank you. Sorry, it took me a minute to get the video on. One of the things that we know is that each individual person's need is going to vary. Like you said, for, you know, maybe an extended period of time, we will work as best as possible within the policy to allow the protections that are afforded to a person if they need some extended leave time because they themselves are ill.
And one thing I would add is that there, in, there are different tiers of leave that as a person works their way through what their needs are and if they need, if their needs to stay out are extended, then we continue to work with employees to help them extend their leave to, to as much as they can so that they have, they need to get healthy and, and to come back to work. So as, you know, there's a lot built into that policy. I know it's like an inch thick when you try to read through it, but it's, there's a lot in there built and designed around supporting employees and their families.
Mrs. Carlson, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick one, clarification on something you said earlier, Debbie. We are, are we thinking about doing half days? Like you said, students could come in and, you know, everyone could do math at a time. No, okay, good.
We're not thinking about half days.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, I said I only have one more question, but one more. Do we have any spent?
No, 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 you said one.
I know. Do we have any special options for staff or employees that are in a high-risk group? I mean, I know we've had a couple of our older, we've had our one older, slightly older principal resign and we've had it, lost a couple more senior teachers, but how are we going?
One of the things that with the virtual learning option, you could assign students that are in that virtual learning option to teachers that would be virtual too. So I mean, we're, we, again, we haven't landed all this, but there are those kinds of things that you can begin to think about. But principals will know better as we, as soon as we can think about a schedule and teachers and staff see that, then they're going to be able to say, that works for me or that's, that's difficult for me. So the sooner we can get to this, this place and the next place, I think the student, student principals will know what staff will be in, in the building and which staff members need other accommodations or leave or those kinds of pieces. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to go, come, go ahead and come out today and, and, and begin this kind of discussion so that everyone would know how we're leaning and, and how we're thinking about this.
And I think it would be appropriate to, to get Ross to meet with the principals and Claire about requests for reasonable accommodations. So we're not, we're not one rule at this school and one rule of another, because that's sort of primed to, to be challenged. We ought to have one, one.
We're, we're actually working through some protocols and that's why we will refer our employees through human resources to make sure that they're hearing common information.
And I will say that that's what I've heard Dr. Kaiser say over and over to the leadership team. Leave needs to go to, to human resources so that we can, as you said, be consistent and fair and, and working together.
I never doubted you, Clay. The bad news is we're going to stop here. The good news is we're going to pick up tomorrow morning. We have two hours scheduled on this subject, so we can really do a deep dive into it. Ms. Collins, thank you so much and thank you for your leadership on this project. I think I counted that there were in the four groups, there were 92 professionals from our schools and, and working in those four groups. And so I think that the, the output has been amazing and I look forward to learning more about it tomorrow. So thank you very, very much.
The team did an amazing job. Very proud of them. Thank you.
Next up is Dr. McLaughlin with the 2020, 2021 calendar.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, chief of strategic planning. And before I dive into the calendar, I just want to respond once more to Ms. Lee's request I just heard from Jennifer Butler. And COVID-19 results will be posted on our survey results page this afternoon. So I'll send those to you as well, but any members of the public can access those then. So on to the calendar. As part of our return to school plan, Albemarle County Public Schools solicited feedback from the community about, about changing the start date of school to be later in the year. As you can see here, our response rate was very robust. Usually when we do a, a calendar survey, we're lucky to get about 11 or 1,200 respondents. We had close to 5,000 this time. Most of those were parents and staff members and students, but also had about 95 community members. And that's in the space of less than a week. We opened up the survey on June the 11th and just closed it yesterday. And so I'll share the results of those, of that survey with you tonight. I want to just take a minute too, to thank Mr. Page for encouraging us last week to look for ways to engage stakeholders without internet access in the survey. With a very quick turnaround time, the technology and communications teams enacted a phone survey feature in Blackboard Connect that we hadn't used before. This allowed us to send a phone survey in both English and Spanish to 568 homes without internet access. 101 of those families opted to participate. And I think this is just a wonderful example of a practice that helps to close the opportunity gap for families in the school division. So on to the results. A majority of respondents believe that the later start date would be beneficial to students. That was the first question that we asked them. You can see that 51.8% responded with either a four or a five in terms of, of the benefits of a later start date. Close to 30% of respondents believed a change would not be beneficial to students. And this had a weighted score of 3.36 out of five, which indicates to us the general consensus is to shift the start date to a later date in the school calendar. Next, we asked folks to what degree they were satisfied with each of our two drafts. For the start date of September 2nd, respondents were asked to rate their level of satisfaction. This one had a weighted score below three, indicating that respondents would not be satisfied with this draft calendar. The plurality of the responses was a neutral response, indicating they were neither satisfied or dissatisfied, which could show a little bit of ambivalence toward this particular version of the calendar. The second calendar option with a September 8th start date was rated more favorably with a weighted score of 3.45, indicating general satisfaction. The plurality of responses selected very satisfied with this draft and about 28.5% of responses selected a level of dissatisfaction with this draft of the calendar. We had about 250 pages of comments to go through. And so with the survey ending yesterday, we have not been able to disaggregate those in a, in a way that would be meaningful to the board yet. But as soon as we have that, we can pass that information along to you. And so we just wanted to talk about next steps. That our hope, as, as you saw in Ms. Collins' presentation earlier, is that we can have a board vote on the calendar at the June 26th, this part two of the board retreat. And really there, you've got three options to stick with the original calendar, to move to the September 2nd start date in the calendar, or to move to the September 8th start date in the calendar. And so that's our hope that on the 26th, we can, we can finalize that and have one more item checked off the list as we begin to implement our return to school plan. So those are the results of the survey. They will be, I believe they are already published on our survey results page as well for the public to see. And I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Patrick, will the, the comments also be posted or just the numerical results?
We generally don't post comments, just because there, sometimes we'll post, you know, a summary of kind of key, you know, most commonly seen comments that are in there. But sometimes comments, you know, identify individual schools, right, individual people. So our practice is generally not to post the full list of those comments there as, on the results page.
Other questions?
One, what type of allowances will, will we make for teachers? Since they probably will have quite a few more PD days on the calendars. So will we be making any type of allowance? And if so, what?
So, so I'm, yeah, I'm glad you asked that, Mr. Page. We have, as you all know, a 200-day teacher contract. Typically, our school calendar accounts for 195 of those days in terms of teacher workdays. Each version of the September start calendars, you will see accounts for exactly 200 teacher workdays. Now, current thinking is that we'll have a win- Now, current thinking is that we'll have a window prior to the start of the school year for for teacher professional development. On one calendar, I believe you see 12 days of PD. On another, you see 15 days there. It may be that we bring back teachers in a staggered way, that half of our teachers come back on on Monday and then another half on Tuesday, and we stagger them through that. So so it could be that we go back to 195 actual present days for our teachers. But either way, with whatever gets decided, we would not exceed the 200 day teacher contract that we have for everyone.
Dr. McLaughlin, I was very intrigued with the success of reaching out to parents who did not have access to the internet. And I think it was 586 and 101 or 110 decided to participate. Out of that, do you happen to know offhand how many of the respondents responded in Spanish?
We had about a third of that 100. I think it was around 35 who who responded to the Spanish version of the of the phone survey. Yeah. And again, kudos again to to Jennifer Butler and to Mark Leach in our Jennifer and Communications and Mark in our Technology Office, because they took something that we typically don't use a new feature within two days of figuring out that we have it. And they really came together and and got that out. And I think it's a big benefit for our community.
I had a question about the survey data, if you wouldn't mind going back.
Of course.
A few slides. I think it was when you said the plurality said that it was neutral.
On the September 2nd start date.
Oh, I see.
No.
Okay. But that's still.
If the reality is dissatisfied.
So so if you if you broke it into into five different responses, one, two, three, four, or five, the plurality was neutral. That's the the most common response that we got, but it was not a majority of the total responses.
Right. Okay. It just seems as though, you know, more people still think of it as they're still dissatisfied to some degree with it than they are neutral toward it.
Yes. And then if you look at the September 8th, you see a bit of a shift with that.
Right.
So with the September 8th, you see a higher degree of satisfaction. Our weighted scores help with that, too. So any weighted score above three would indicate leaning toward more satisfied. When you look at the September 2nd start date, we see a weighted score just under three, which indicates a slight inclination toward dissatisfied. And when you look at whether our start date moving later would be beneficial, we see a weighted score there of 3.36, which again leans toward feeling that would be a beneficial move for the board to make.
And we didn't give people the option of the original start date because we thought staff just couldn't do that?
We what we wanted to do to accomplish with this survey was gauge people's interest in in seeing whether or not they thought this was beneficial. So our assumption was if people wanted the original start date, they would say this is not beneficial to move the calendar to a September start date.
Yeah. And can we go over again why we think it's beneficial or why we're looking at this?
So there were there were a couple of of reasons we brought up with the board last time. One is that in the COVID-19 survey response, one of the things that we heard from teachers was that if we are going to some type of online learning next year, we want the teachers felt they want more time for professional development. A later start date would would allow for that to happen. We also want to make sure we've got, you know, adequate supplies and everything like that to to meet the requirements of the, you know, the CDC guidance and the return to school plan in terms of of what we need in the schools to bring students back.
And then I think the other thing, Pat, was in our in our weekly superintendent meetings with the state superintendent and also with Governor Northam's announcement, it's it's pretty clear that their intent in in having us come back to school is aligning with Phase Three of reopening of of Virginia and also the school systems. The majority of the school systems in Virginia run on a post-Labor Day start date. And I I think and our staff wanted to test and see what people would think about a post-Labor Day start date, because we believe that we will be getting closer to Phase Three, if not in Phase Three, when when Labor Day comes around. So that was the other piece was to try to open up, not have to open up in Phase Two if we didn't necessarily have to and then have to shift then to Phase Three. It could be more efficient. So.
I I think it's fair, Matt, to point out to the public that that don't know this, that we have to obtain a waiver from the state in order to it this is not started before Labor Day is not the norm by any means. We have
Right.
legal waiver to do so.
Yeah, that's that's good to point that out, Dave, because we Albemarle County is an anomaly as far as our start date. Most of the school systems, particularly, you know, the reason I the reason I I look at it this way, too, is all around Richmond, the school systems start after Labor Day. And so the capitals in Richmond, the governors in Richmond, the VDOEs in Richmond, also on the South Side Peninsula, they all start after Labor Day. So we're all we're just kind of looking at it that way that how do we get in alignment with moving toward Phase Three? Now, I do think it's important to ask our community, and that's why we did the survey, and I really appreciate the board's patience with us having an established calendar and then coming back and saying, hey, would you all entertain? Asking the public, and I'm really grateful to all the families for for chiming in and letting us know what you think. I will say that I did discuss, I have been in discussion with the post-Labor Day start with the with city school staff from the very beginning of our conversations about this. And I asked if city school staff would be interested in looking at this type of calendar. I understood at that time that there was some interest. They have not asked their community yet through a survey as to whether they would begin after Labor Day or not. I'm I think they might. I think they may, but I obviously have no way of influencing that other than through collaboration. We do have, I am working on scheduling a meeting with our counterparts in the city for next Wednesday to discuss not only the post-Labor Day start, but also what we are looking at or as we begin to firm up our our school site plans around offering instruction to students. I know they had already published some things to their community. And I I think they're also interested in learning more about what what we're going to be doing. I I think it's important to just say those things because I want the board to know that we are trying to coordinate with the city and with what they're doing. If we end up on different schedules, we're we're going to work with our staff. We're going to work with our our teachers, with our support staff to make sure that we meet their needs and and help them as they make their way back to to work.
I have one more question about the survey data. Is it possible to get disaggregated data by population? Teachers, parents, community members?
Yes, we we don't have that for you tonight, but but I can work with our with our team and get that broken out by each of the four categories that we have.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I did have one question. It seemed like the survey. It's holding spacebar. It seems like people favor the later start, but something that's not encapsulated in the survey results is that there's going to be options for parents who don't want to their kids to go to school at all, because there's a a big percentage of people that just don't want to go back to school there. So they want a later date. But that survey doesn't say that there might be an option for you to do online. Just something to consider.
That's right. Something to consider.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
We will see you, I hope, tomorrow at some point. And if not, we'll see you next week for sure.
Right.
Okay. Next up is a school resource officer program evaluation. And I think Ms. Gellner is going to be speaking to us about that.
So Jamie, I'm gonna I'm just gonna jump in for a minute. First of all, I just want to say, I know everybody thinks about different things during the moment of silence. I was thinking about Nick King. Y'all aren't aware, but Nick is in the hospital. So, um, you know, if you get another opportunity for a moment of silence later on, or you're just thinking about people you care about, please throw Nick into the into your thoughts. I'm a little worried about him. We asked Nick after our board meeting last week to start looking at doing a quick turnaround program review of our SRO program. And so he's been doing a little bit of work on that. We had during our board meeting rehearsal yesterday, we saw the presentation that Nick was working on. And also, he was working in consultation with Jamie because she's our our program evaluator. And so we asked her to come today to the board. And the goal is for Jamie to be able to present to the board an outline of a relatively speedy, I guess, review or a review of the current state. It's not really an evaluation in a sense that we're going to make a recommendation to the board. We just simply want to provide good information, the best information that we can provide about our local context as well as the context of Virginia, given that this is a national phenomenon right now that we're looking at. I will just say that from my perspective, when I was a kid and my dad was teaching me how to do carpentry, if he was doing something to fix a rotten panel on the house or maybe build something out back, one of the things he taught me was you always measure twice and cut once. That you for some reason in our society today, we never seem to have time to do something right the first time. We always seem to have time or don't have time, but we make time to fix it after we make a decision when we didn't have enough information to make the decision in the first place. But I believe that you should measure twice and cut once. So that when you cut, you are cutting where you intended to cut. And you would cut in a way that you could accommodate the rest of the structure with the decision that you made. So I would say, just so the board understands, from from a staff perspective, from a school perspective, we will work with whatever decisions that the school board makes, that we're not here to advocate one way or another. We're simply going to provide the best information that we think we can provide you in a time so that you can measure twice and cut once. I don't think I had any other notes on that. I do know I read an article yesterday that Phil provided that, just to provide a context, that Richmond City Schools is also looking at changing their relationship with their police department. And they're taking 90 days to study that relationship before they make that decision. And we're going to continue to provide articles to the board to let you know what other school systems are doing. That actually came out of the Virginia School Board Association news feed that all the board members get. So anyway, at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Jamie to give you an outline of what we think we can do. And then any questions that you have for her will will relay back to the cabinet and Nick and see what see what you want to do.
Hi, good afternoon. Can y'all see my slide deck there?
Yes, you're good, Jamie.
Okay, thank you. I'm Jamie Gellner, the Division Program Evaluator, filling in on behalf of Nick King, our Student Services Officer. And last week, you asked us to put together a program review in our School Resource Officer Program. So here are our ideas moving forward with a quick turnaround. And as Dr. Haas stated, we are going to be providing with a lot of information and there will not be an evaluative part of the review. As you may know, our MOU, formerly called the Joint Protocol between ACPS and ACPD, states that the scope of the SRO responsibilities include these things to promote a positive and supportive school climate as well as safe and secure environments, to collaborate with the schools and to reduce and prevent crime, to minimize student involvement with the criminal justice systems. The MOU points out that the School Resource Officer therefore has many roles in our schools, including law enforcement officer, law-related educator, informal mentor and role model, resource for criminal charges and cases, and a resource for information on gang activity and participation. Our program has five officers, one at Albemarle High School and one to cover the rest of the feeder pattern, one at Monticello and one to cover the rest of the feeder pattern, and one in the Western feeder pattern. The SROs report to their own chain of command and Nick is our direct contact for ACPS. We will pull together several pieces of data for the board. The Code of Virginia requires school divisions to submit data to VDOE on incidents of discipline, crime, and violence. Current reports contain selected comparisons to prior years. And this data are used also to complete federal reports required by the Gun Free Schools Act and the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. This report requires an annual reporting of the number of students suspended or expelled statewide for possessing or bringing firearms on school property. We'll also look at our state and local climate surveys, which have statements about how safe students feel at school, although they don't specifically ask about school resource officers. We will review the ACPS threat assessment reports from last year. We will send a survey out to students, grades six through 12 tomorrow, asking them about their level of comfort with school resource officers and their experiences. We have already asked for principal input about their experience with school resource officers, and we will provide a research brief from Dewey Cornell, who was a professor in the Currie School at UVA, who is known for his research on youth violence and school security. We've also reached out to EAB for a quick turnaround research request on program outcomes of school resource officer programs and have various other studies, articles, and applicable ACPS policies for your review. So today we have presented the items for the program review. June 26, we will present the complete information for the board's review.
Jamie, in with respect to the student survey, can we have a carve out like we did for the other survey to reach those that might not be available by computer, online survey, or Spanish speaking, or I I think we need a subgroup of that.
Sure. I'll work with Jennifer in our communications team.
And I when when we talked about doing this, I asked to make sure that when Patrick works on this, because they'll work with the survey component, that Judy had mentioned earlier, she wanted to make sure it's broken out by demographic groups of respondents. So I want to be sure that we do that.
We did. We have asked for school gender, and we've allowed for optional choices for race and gender and for them to check all that apply in those categories.
Jamie, I don't have access to the slides that you just showed. Can you is there a way that we can see that while we're discussing or I don't know? Can you email it to us? It's not on the meeting minutes.
Oh, okay. I can share my screen again right now if that's helpful and send it to. Do you want me to go to a particular slide?
I guess if you could send me the PowerPoint. I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
If you would send that to all of us, that would be great.
Sure.
And and I think I'm sure it'll be available tomorrow during our session.
And so, John, you were, Mr. Akara, you were planning on having a discussion, a lengthy discussion about this tomorrow?
We we are. We we've got two hours set out for the first subject and then two hours set out for this subject. So we can really kind of grind down into it and 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 work our way through it. And then there will probably be some time next week as well for that. Ms. Gellner, one question for you. I guess I missed what it is that we were looking to do on July 9. What is the decision to be reached on July 9? Proposed.
So I guess I will leave that for Dr. Haas to answer. I think we were going to present with you all of the information on July, June 26. Um, I think we were going to present with you all of the information on July, June 26th and then July 9th. Um, you can provide staff with next steps or where you would like to go from here.
So, thank you, Jamie. Um, so also in addition to the work that we're doing, uh, one of the things we do plan to work with the board on is structuring, um, a resolution. So that, uh, I, for example, we have, um, uh, Mr. Holden showed me a resolution that a board recently developed to make decision to alter their relationship with their police department. And what they did is they structured it as a resolution that provided their, you know how like when you make a resolution, it starts with the reasons for why you're doing what you're doing. And then also it provides a step-by-step understanding of how that relationship is going to be undone or redone, reconsidered, altered in some way. So it spells out the particulars of the change so that your constituents understand the change that you're making in pieces. And also the board has a, a, a clear understanding of what's changing and what's not changing and why that's occurring. So what we want to do as we've done, you know, what I think we had a very successful, uh, budget process this year, although it ended with us going into a recession. Uh, but the reason I think it was successful was because we worked, uh, transparently and, and worked back and forth with the board to get to where you wanted to get in the decision-making process. And it became very clear to everyone what the decision was going to be. So we're hoping that by July 9th, that through the, the direction of the board, we'll be able to present a resolution to you that can be put in front of you by the chair and then, uh, looking for a motion, um, to support that resolution for the change. To me, it's like a breadcrumb trail, uh, that you're laying out into your decision so that, uh, it's not just a yes or a no, or not just, we're gonna, we're gonna undo this, but we haven't really made any kind of, uh, considerations for what the undoing looks like or how it's going to be structured. So that's, that's what our hope is to be able to put that in front of you.
So I, I guess I'm, what I'm hearing, Dr. Haas, is that, uh, we're going to get, we're going to work on it for two hours tomorrow. We'll have additional information next Friday and with no recommendations. And then the board would, um, I'm not sure exactly how we would do this in terms of, of meetings and things like that, would hammer out, you know, all, work with the data, hammer out what it is that, that we want to see happen.
Yes.
And then, and then, um, I'm not sure how this would happen, but consult with you and explain it to you and, and your team. And then, uh, what I'm hearing about resolution, we can talk about this tomorrow. Uh, unless we need to talk about it now, but I'd say let's do it tomorrow where we.
Yeah.
And by the way, by, by the way, for anybody listening in, our meeting tomorrow, whether it's on the, uh, program for opening the schools or whether it's on this subject is, are all, uh, public and will be streaming on our, uh, website. And so I think we're going to need to, to, to chew on the, on the resolution thing and, uh, and see how we, how we feel about it and, and how we get there. If that's, if that's the path that, uh, that, that we like.
Yes, we were, um, we were going, we were thinking about, we, we can share tomorrow. Uh, Ross can share tomorrow the, an example of what I'm talking about so that the board can see it. And then again, you could, you could look at that and say, well, we don't want to do that either. But I, I get, we're just trying to offer you, um, a path forward.
I understand.
Doctor, yes, I could share with you, um, one of the resolutions, uh, described by Matt, uh, Dr. Haas regarding the Montgomery Public School System in Maryland and, um, the structure that, uh, the resolution, um, prescribed. Uh, and that way the, it gives you some further information about what something could look like. You can put aside the timeframes. That's really up to you, but at least it'll give you an inside as to what other school divisions, uh, around our area are doing.
Okay. Finished Ross?
I'd like to add a point for clarification. Dr. Acuff, Jennifer Butler is letting me know that, um, we don't have, we don't necessarily have the phone numbers of all of the students. Um, we do have all the parents, so we'll have to brainstorm kind of a way, um, to see how we would use the phone option in this case.
Okay. All right. I have a question. And Jamie, I think you said that the survey will include questions about the level of, uh, comfort with the students and also their experiences with, on the SROs.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to, if the survey has already been done, I would also like to have a question on it because you showed a slide that had some objectives for the SROs, like relationship building, few other things. So I'd also like maybe a question about how well our students and parents think that those objectives have been met. Like one of them was, uh, building a relationship or acting as a mentor for some of our students. So I'd like a question about how well those objectives have been met. And if possible, whether or not we could have that broken down so that we could see it by demographics, uh, because that might be hard to do, but that would be important to me also.
Um, Jamie, can you, can we share the, uh, survey with the board tomorrow so they can take a look and give feedback?
Yes, sir.
Other questions for now?
Not a question, but can I just, two sentences. Uh, yesterday, the Board of Supervisors passed their Climate Action Plan Draft. Uh, if you recall early this year, or maybe even late last year, Katrina and I proposed that the school board, um, set up a, uh, that's a sustainability advisory committee. And we discussed that in the February 13th meeting. It seems to me that the school should be working with the county and interacting with respect to the implementation or the goals of the action plan. So I, I guess I would throw that to Matt. Um, I think you've, you've talked about it with at least one of the supervisors. But I think since we operate in this county and we're a very big footprint, that we should be paying attention. I know we do a, a good job, but, um, I would like to be working within the, um, envelope of the county.
Dr. Acuff, do you have a copy of what they passed?
In fact, I do.
Would you be so kind as to send it out to all of us?
I'd be delighted.
Thank you.
I do have a piece about the business when we get there, but if we're still on the, the surveys, um, I, I'd need a minute to kind of digest whatever we're asking because I do have, I'm, I'm all for getting more data, but I, I do wonder what kind of, um, what we're going to extrapolate from that data. Cause I think on that list, I, it was quick when it went up, but I think there's something about like at telling what, how many violent crimes? Or what was it? How many crimes? I just don't know. What are we doing with that data? Cause what are we comparing it to? Or kind of questions I have, but I assume we're going to talk about this tomorrow, once we've got a chance to look at it.
I'm, I'm sure that we are. Yes. And.
I have other business when we move to that section.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Um, actually I see that we don't have another business, but do we have any other business before we adjourn? We don't have another, uh, uh, section for it. Usually nine point O, but it could, uh, Ms. Carlson, if that's what you were going to do, uh, please, that would be the time.
Yeah. So my other business piece, and I had the chance to talk to a few of you guys on the phone. It's just that, um, speaking about taking the time to digest things and look at our data and evaluate. When we made the decision about Confederate imagery, um, a year ago, a year ago, or at the start of the school year, the, the goal was to go back and see if we needed to take any further action. And I would like to respectfully request that we do so. I think there's a lot that could be said about it and probably more eloquently by some of our other board members. But just from my role as, um, as an assistant city attorney, I can say that I don't think we're, we're escaping any kind of liability by not taking action when we already effectively are banning it through our superintendent. And we're opening ourselves up to a lot of optics problems and beyond optics. We're, we're sending a message to our students. It's really easy to resolve since we already are not allowing students to wear Confederate imagery. And I think it's time that we, we make a resolution and move on. So, um, I don't think we can make a motion at this meeting for something like that, although I am confused because we, we did make a motion for the holiday, um, at the beginning. So I, I'm open to, to other input about how we should proceed, but I think it's past time.
You know, I, I think what we should do is let's get a consensus as to this, if, if the board is, uh, wants to move forward with this. And then at our next, uh, pre-agenda meeting, we'll make it a, uh, an agenda item.
Is there any reason we can't just vote on this today? I mean, we've had a year and a half to think about it.
Well, let, let's see if there is some interest in doing that.
My, my concern, Alan, would be that we don't really have something to vote on. There's nothing, I mean, we can say we can give direction, but we don't really have, I mean, I don't know what the motion would look like unless someone has prepared one.
And that's feedback that Dave gave me on the phone as well, because I, I think what would be ideal, and I, I hate to put more work on you guys because I know you're, um, busting your chops and in central office. But what I'd love to see next week is, um, the, and Dave, you stated this better, but, uh, like, I guess a, a resolution or, or something saying that we are now going to officially put this in our policy that Confederate imagery is, is banned. So something for us to vote, create something for us to vote on next week.
I think, I think, I think, I think we should, we could, the way this could be handled is, um, through a direction to staff.
Yeah.
And I, this is not the only way to do it. I'm just, uh, this is my thought. A direction to staff from the board saying, this is what we want to accomplish. Please accomplish it before the school's open. Um, that's, I mean, you know, cause I don't know, I did, and it goes to what I was saying to you, Alan. I don't know how, at this point, we structure it last, you know, last year, Graham and I and, and John O., uh, we're looking at a, uh, my brain's not going to work here, but we were looking at language of a, a dress code. But we don't really have that in front of us at, at this point. But I think that the board can still take a, 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 a stance to say, look, we want this to get done. And, and let the professionals on the, on the staff implement that direction.
Right.
So maybe, uh, maybe Matt could give us some input because, you know, I mean, do we already have it expressly banned in the policy? So maybe it's as simple as what we did last year is we never as a board said that we agreed with Matt. We, I give a statement saying that he's not going to let Confederate imagery and we never said, yes, we support that, do it. We're in agreement. So maybe it is just as simple as saying, we agree with what Matt did. But Matt, maybe you can provide guidance.
I'm pretty sure that Matt keeps good notes and records of all of his statements. And that night when he made that statement, it was very well put together and a very beautiful statement. So if the motion could sort of really boil down to, uh, from that statement that you made, concise, uh, you know, a concise edit of that statement, that could be a good motion.
Well, first of all, thank you, Graham. Um, this, uh, so also I would say that, um, Ross and Bernard have been kicking around, um, based on the conversations that, that you all had at the last meeting, that they've been doing some work on, uh, possible revision to our, uh, policy around, um, uh, student behavior, which is that's, that's where the dress code comes from. So we could, uh, bring, bring back a draft. The, the one thing that I've, that I wanted to be clear about is, um, is in the, in the banning process, like when you say you want to ban a particular thing, or is it just specifically going to be banning, um, Confederate imagery? Or are you looking more toward what I had, uh, presented to the board last year? It wasn't stated, it Confederate, it, it stated, I think essentially that there was a, you know, as part of something that's disruptive, we, it was included in that Confederate imagery, um, and some other things as well. So that's one thing I'm interested to know. Is it specifically the Confederate flag? Is it, is it Confederate imagery? Is it, you know, what, to what extent would you want to be specific? Am I asking that the right way, Ross?
Yes. I mean, what we have been working on, Dr. Haas, um, Dr. Harrison and I, it's something broader than that, uh, to, uh, address all images of hate and oppression, uh, without naming anything individually. Because that is a, it's a broader statement than just having one particular, uh, type of image. We could have a new symbol. I mean, I read about one just today, a new symbol next week that could also be encompassed under, um, a, a, a broader prohibition against any, um, imagery, either worn or displayed. And by displayed, we mean on books, flags, uh, on the car decals, whatever, of all images of hate and oppression.
And I, so I imagine that also there is, there, there's a desire to, to have some specificity. So, um, I, I think that we could also say, we could also give examples though, in, in a policy. We could, you can have that broader statement, but you could also say, for example, and then cite specifically what's current, like what are the, what are the current symbols that, uh, the board is most concerned about? Because I know when we would make, um, dress code, dress codes for our schools in our student handbooks, we would have a broad statement, then we would think about whatever the current issue might be and try to tailor it to that. Is that, is that also a possibility?
We'll look into that. I do want to tie, um, as all of this, we're all worried about disruption to the students, both physically and emotionally. So whatever we include in there, I think it would, uh, my advice to the board is that we certainly keep the, um, the concept of disruption that Dr. Haas discussed, um, a year and a half ago as the, uh, as the reason why we needed to consider something like this.
And I think that I think, Ross, I think that the record over a period of a year is pretty, pretty solid. I have no problem putting, putting all of our notes in, in front of somebody and say, look, this is, this is the testimony we've gotten from students. This is the testimony we've gotten from teachers. This is the testimony we've got from administrators. This is why we're doing this. This is why it's important. Um, I think, you know, Matt did, to your point, I think, I think broad is fine, but I agree that I think that there needs to be a spec- specificity on a couple of things that we just need to take a stand and say, look, this is hate imagery irrespective of how someone interprets it or feels about it or anything. This is hate imagery that we're just not going to expose our kids to.
I agree with that.
Someone had, um, someone had mentioned earlier, a board member had mentioned, um, drafting a resolution. So I think just in the same kind of alignment with what I was saying earlier about, uh, the school resource officers, we could, we could, that could be the, the venue through which we present to the board. You know, something that you could put in front of yourselves and then say, okay, this is something we're going to make a motion and get a second and then discuss it and then move forward with it. So we could, we could come back with a, with a resolution. We could do that.
I, I, I'd like to see that, Matt. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. And our, so in our July, um, July 9th, uh, is a business meeting. So would that be, would that be all right if we brought that to the board then?
Yes.
We'd be able to get drafts of it. I appreciate when sometimes when the drafts go around before the meeting so that we can.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can kick around some drafts. I mean, when we're, when we're sending things like that around, of course, it is, it is public information. So I mean, just keep in mind, um, if we send it out to the board and, and push it around and come back and forth with it, it's a, it's, it's open to the public if someone ever wants to, um, to see it, which is fine. I just would say that, that, that's part of the process. I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted you to know.
And if, if we're responding to each other, we can't, we can't have a reply off. We just can't do that because it's an illegal meeting.
I think you can get away with it one time and then it becomes a meeting after that.
You have temporaneous, temporaneous interaction.
I know. It does all this stuff now for a living, so.
I'm fine with that. So at the end, we're saying, well, it's already, it's already, our students can't wear it. We're going to put in our dress code policy. I agree with Ober, uh, express. We're going to put in our dress code policy, I agree with Ober, expressly state that Confederate imagery is not allowed. We have, we have made the decision that it is considered hate imagery, given that the current situation and the disruption that it's causing our students. And then we will pass a resolution to just tie up the loose ends of where we did not respond to this a year ago. And then it's, I'm, I'm happy with that, if that's how I'm understanding.
So, so we'll, we'll start drafting.
Okay. Katrina, thank you for bringing that up. And it looks like we got steps to take and progress to make going forward. One last thing I've got is, just so we all know, on July, in the July 9 meeting, our first student representative is going to be on the board with us. Her name is Malani Burkhardt. And she and Elijah Witt, who is the alternate, alternate, and Will Trout, who will be doing the next three months after Malani's term is up at the end of September, all got trained by Jennifer and on the Governance Manual. And I think Graham and I are going to figure out a way to do a little bit more training for, for them before she comes on board. But just so you know, if you see a new face, that's Malani. And we're all like, I'm looking forward to working with her. I know Graham is, and I hope that all of you are as well. So if there is no other business going once, going twice, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.